Okay, let's start the work session for Monday, June 15. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Uh, councilman Skorinji?
Present.
Councilwoman Resnetti?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Present.
Councilman Strawn?
Present.
Councilman Burns?
Present.
And President Scanlon? That's all seven here. She is here.
Steve Carson, tell us about RL 20105.
Certainly, thank you. So Vines, which are the guys that run that urban farm on, next to the river, they, they have gotten, they were awarded a contract with the city through CDBG funding. Um, they have been, this, the growth Binghamton Youth Program, they've been awarded this money for the past several years. Um, so this year, they've not quite executed the contract yet because of COVID hitting. And so they, they wanted to modify it before doing final execution. Um, so basically, this is a request to approve this modification because it's slightly different than their original application. Um, to sum up what they're doing, they're dropping the number of kids they were planning on hiring um, from 25 to about six. And to focus on, uh, to shift the funds they would have used to employ those, those youth to provide additional supplies for, um, it's the home gardening debts. Um, I believe those still need to be in LMI areas. So what this is basically doing is just reducing, shifting the program to be less labor intensive. Um, mainly due to COVID and having, trying to maintain the, the proximity distancing and all those other things they need. So that's what this RL is. There's, there's really no shifting in budget because the budget's not technically been agreed to yet. But I can tell you, comparing to the budget they were going to receive, most of the numbers remain the same except obviously the, the salaries going down and the, uh, material costs going up.
Questions or comments? Councilwoman Riley?
Yes, so Steve did say there is no approved budget. I didn't hear you very well.
Yeah, sorry, it could be my microphone, I apologize. Um, we do not technically yet have an executed contract with them because by the time they got to the point to sign it, we were dealing with the whole COVID crisis. And they sort of held off and tried to figure out how they were going to adjust their program before they executed the contract. That being said, I still determine that there was enough of a change of scope, it probably should come back to the city council for additional approval.
Okay, but we don't have this specific, uh, because if you, if you decrease from 25 to six and shift to supplies, that's substantial. And without really seeing the numbers and how that will be allocated and utilized, um, it's kind of tough. Is there a projected budget? Budget?
Yes, I thought it was being included for the budget.
No, I don't have it.
The overall budget itself has not changed at all. Um, my understanding is the salaries for the youth crew members has gone down and an equivalent amount of supplies and materials has gone up. And that's based off the original budget that was supplied in the application, which was given to city council last year.
This is Ken Frank. The, 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 the new budget was set with the legislation, but I can send it to everybody on city council now. I don't think it was attached to the RL. It is with the new legislation though. Give me a moment and I, I will send it to everybody.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this? All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank members of city council for their review of the BLDC commercial facade improvement loan of $58,875 for Sheri E. Eaton of the Garland LLC located at 116 Washington Street. This loan was approved by the board of the Binghamton Local Development Corporation at the regular meeting on May 28. By city law, BLDC loans over $25,000 require the additional approval of city council. Hence, that's why we're together today. 116 Washington Street was built in 1868 and numbers among the properties in our Court Street State and National Register Historic District. And block of buildings on the east side of the street. The building saw a number of uses in the 19th century from cabinetware, furniture and liquor purveyors to cigar manufacturing. During the late 19th century years of the temperance movement, it was home to the Union Rescue Mission. Present owner Sheri Eaton purchased the property in 1992 and has maintained the structure in excellent condition. Her business Garland Gallery located at this address features fine custom picture framing, books, cards and gifts. The building has six loft style apartments located on the upper stories that are fully occupied. Ms. Eaton was one of the founders of First Fridays in Binghamton and the gorgeous Washington Street Business Association. At this point, Sheri Eaton is undertaking a $78,500 project to repoint the entire brick facade and has contracted Mark Dozeretz of Landmark Builders, who's one of our area's best restoration contractors and preservation masons. Mr. Dozeretz proposes to repoint the entire brick exterior with historically appropriate mortar mix, replace missing bricks and rebed with period correct brick salvage from other 19th century structures. He's going to re-glaze, double hung windows, prime and repaint using previously approved paint colors, repair the fourth floor eastern pergola, prime and repaint, repair the roof escape hatch, seal, prime and repaint, steam, then finally steam clean and seal the exterior brick with clear silicone sealer for waterproofing. This work will help preserve the landmark for many years to come. The City Commission on Architecture and Urban Design reviewed this project at their monthly meeting on June 2 and recommended it to city council for approval. Ms. Eaton has a good borrowing history with the Binghamton Local Development Corporation and excellent credit. First borrowing to purchase a building, next as a participant in the 2008 New York Main Street Program, and now seeking a facade loan for the continued maintenance of the landmark structure. The BLDC Board was enthusiastic about this loan, felt it was a win for Washington Street and our historic downtown and hopes it will encourage more property owners to undertake historically appropriate restoration work. Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I have a question. This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Sure, go ahead, sure.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to say thank you so much for all of that information. This is, sounds like a very exciting project and it seems like it is being done carefully and intentionally, which I very much appreciate. I just had a question about, um, I guess this is maybe logistically, um, well, first of all, could you please repeat the name of the person who is going to be doing the restoration?
It's Mark Dozeretz, Dozeretz, excuse me. D-O-Z-O-R-E-T-Z. He's with Landmark Builders.
Landmark Builders, great, thank you. Um, so this is just, um, uh, I guess a technicality question that, let's say, um, I, I don't know anything about this person and, you know, just, let's say, um, there was maybe someone who, I, I'm just, like hypothetically, in doing research, let's say there was maybe a person who we thought could do a, a better job for whatever reason. Would we then, like, could we approve the loan, but, um, but, um, sorry, what am I trying to, I'm trying to think how to phrase my question. Like, would, if we approved the loan, it would have to be with this, um, this builder and, you know, all of the, the materials already. Um, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble phrasing my question. But basically, like, it, this would, if we approved the loan, it's not just the money, it's all of the other things that were specified in the legislation. That's how, that's what I'm trying to ask, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's, this is not a bid situation. Um, this was not a public bid for this. This was a, um, Mr. President, contacted Mark Dozeretz to do this work. He did work actually on 15 Holly Street, which is just down the block there in the 2008 Main Street Program. Um, and, um, the, the work he has outlined here has already been reviewed by COD, the Commission on Architecture and Urban Design or City Preservation Commission. Uh, they're familiar with him as a builder and have reviewed his techniques, you know, had questions about the mortar that he was going to use. Um, Mr. Dozeretz has been around this town for, I'd say, at least 20 years and, and done other good work.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sure he's wonderful. I was just wondering, you know, hypothetically, you know, a, a process question. But thank you for my patience as I was struggling to phrase that question. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this? Councilwoman Skorinji, please.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just, just to add to that, um, I've actually served, I've, I've actually served with Mark uh, on a number of boards. He's very involved in the community. He's a homeowner and resident of the city of Binghamton. His daughter is a small business owner downtown. They're very vested in the community and, uh, he's a great guy and, uh, his work is top notch.
Joe, we're getting feedback. Just so you know.
Thank you, thank you. Sorry about that.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Boyd. Yeah, to Mr. Paddock.
Okay, we're looking to amend 2020 disposal.
I'm sorry to interrupt. If, I'm hearing a strong echo, it's hard to understand what's being said.
Can you try to mute it really quick and then see if that works?
If you're not talking, please mute your microphone.
How does that sound?
It's better.
Is that better? Okay.
Much better, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're here to amend the 2020 Refuge Disposal Budget. Um, the reason for this is that it's necessary that we fund the DPW dispatcher payout in the amount of $20,483.14. As you know, we don't encumber money for these payouts, so we have to look for money within our budget to go and handle these payouts. This position is going to be retiring here in July.
Questions or comments? Anybody else? All right, thank you, John. All right, we got the RL 20-107.
Which one are you doing?
Our 106.
106, I'm sorry.
Okay, when we did the 2020 budget, uh, in the general fund, water fund and refuse fund, we did negative amounts, uh, for salary adjustments for positions that we knew we would have shortages in for periods of time. Uh, this helps to reduce the taxes or the rates that, uh, people pay. So the first one, the 106, is the water fund. We had a negative $43,326. We're showing you where that money was saved and, uh, putting it back into that other account, the salary adjustment account, adding $43,000 to that, which will bring it to zero.
Questions or comments on this? Councilwoman Riley?
All right, I, I was muted. Thank you guys again. Chuck, thank you for that explanation. But can you run that by me once more in case, you know, as if I were, um, a layperson trying to interpret the budgeting process. So you said you started a budget line for a paid employee that was filled with a negative balance?
No, no, in the, and when we did the budget, we put in a negative $43,000, knowing that there would be shortage, position short during the year because people resign, retire, and we can't fill them.
Okay.
And that's, so we put a negative number in there to cover that in the budget process. Now we have those positions that have already been emptied equalling $43,000 that were taking money out of the budgeted number and putting it into $43,000.
Okay, so just let me, let me ask again. So we are hypothetically assuming that, I guess based upon previous years, that we will see an automatic percentage of resignations, retirees. So the budget is front loaded with lines that are then transitioned to assist with lines that are short filled?
We, we, Angela, you're partially correct.
Okay.
We, we, we don't know who's going to retire or resign or leave, okay? That, that number's budgeted out there. During the year, through history, we know people are going to leave. Okay, that we can't fill those positions immediately. So we budget a negative number to make up for that, so we don't, if we didn't do that, all that money would go back into fund balance at the end of the year, or, uh, we could use that money for some other project. This is a way of keeping taxes and rates lower.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions or comments? All right, check on the 107.
107 is exactly the same thing related to the general fund, that's $100,000. And 108 is the same thing related to the refuse fund for $50,000. And you can see all the different lines that have been empty.
Questions or comments on those two? Councilwoman Riley?
Yes, okay, again, help me out. So, for example, I see three, five lines. I'll just use the police department as an example for this, this RL. I see five lines with the police department with the budgeted 2020 annual salary with the biweekly rate and the date from and the date to. So what does that mean? This position was not filled?
Chuck, which one are we talking about?
So if you look at A3120.
Yep.
If you go, so if we look at RL, we're on RL 2107, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so if we go to your chart and we look, if we go five lines from the bottom, we see one, two, three, four, five, just using again, the largest line, the largest number of lines for, to help us understand better. Um, we see five lines that say police, correct?
Yep, yep.
Okay, and so it says the annual salary, the biweekly rate, and it says a date from and a date to. So what is that telling us as the recipients of this information? These lines were not filled?
Well, let me, let me walk you through it, Angela. It's, so that position, the bottom position, has an annual salary of $34,310. Biweekly rate of $1,319.62. From 113, 2020 to 221, 20, which is two pay periods, that position was empty.
Okay.
For a total unused fund of $2,639.
Got it. That does not tell us that the position is still unfilled. It just accounts for that period where that fund was not utilized and we're rolling it over.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
I have a question. It, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Is that position filled now?
I'd have to go through each one and answer that, Joe. I, I, I don't know as I'm sitting here. I know the assistant chief, the assistant police chief is.
Right.
The other ones, uh,
I know we did hire two. I know we did send, uh, we sent two officers to, uh, training.
Well, there's, there's, we actually sent 11 officers to training, only 10 of them have made it through it so far. For sure, one there that's not being filled. But these other ones of $74,909?
Yeah.
I think both of those have been filled.
Okay, thank you.
Officers that retired and, uh, they retired after we did the budget last year and we would have filled them in March.
Hey, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, check on the RL 20-109. Got you, got that, yeah. Got the 109 there.
Skip 108.
Ms., John Paddock's here with me because this is really, should have been, come underneath his name, but when we did it, my name got put on there because I was working with them on it. So what the city has done, last year we transferred money to create a transfer station. Uh, that transfer station is supposed to be online middle of July.
Right here in middle of July, yes.
And in order to do that, we have to transfer two people into what we call a transfer station operator. So we're basically creating these two new positions and eliminating two positions that they're coming from. We're eliminating an MEO position and a street maintainer position for the rest of the year. What is, what a transfer station does is the garbage trucks will come and put the trash there. Uh, we'll be all consolidated and we'll take maybe one or two trips to the landfill a day with a tractor trailer rather than taking seven or eight trips with the garbage truck each day.
It'll cut down our maintenance costs, that's tires, fuel, and it also costs down on the wear and tear to these vehicles themselves. We can turn around the garbage quicker because each, each of the garbage trucks of seven have to go to the gas can once a day or more.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Angela Riley again. So the two transfer station operator positions don't have the salaries listed here. Are they the, are, are we assuming that they will be similar to the two positions we're terminating?
Actually more. Actually more.
I didn't hear. You froze, or maybe I froze. I missed that.
The actual salaries are going to be higher.
You know what they're going to be, John, by any chance? It's, it's not a lot.
It's a little bit more, but it's not a lot.
It's not a lot more. These, this position, they have to have a Class A license, tractor trailer license. So we probably, within the DPW, have five people, so we will have to put that, uh, out for bid through the Teamsters, um, you know, what two individuals, you know, go into those positions.
Other questions or comments? We'll move on. Thanks, John.
I'm sorry, JP, remember you have to have those salaries approved by personnel and they've got to be added to the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, that's true. They're, they're aware, we're on board with them.
Okay.
And this, you're not going to vote on this till July. This is, Ken just says, this has to go to civil service at the end of June, which it's scheduled for. If that gets approved, you guys will get this in July to vote on.
Okay. Again, just, wait, I'm sorry. Just for clarification though, are we moving funds to cover this new, but, these two new budgeted positions, which are higher than the positions we are terminating? Or will more money need to be moved to cover the salary and expenses for these two new positions?
Angela, there should, there should have been a, a line over there moving money around. I'm not sure what happened to it, but there, I'll, I'll, I'll send it out to everybody.
Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you. Jared, are you there?
Yeah, yes, this is Reece Standish. Want to go, want to go for me?
If I can go, I'm ready. Thanks, guys. Jared suggested that Ray go.
All right, Reece Standish, tell us about RL 20-115, please.
This resolution is, uh, authorizes the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement, number two, with Barton La Judas for, uh, conduit inspection for, uh, meeting the DEC and Corps of Engineers, Army Corps of Engineers requirements that every four years you have to do a inspection. And, uh, we have completed everything except the, uh, high pressure lines, which are the water lines that go under the river and through the floodwalls. And so this supplemental agreement, uh, is to cover, uh, Barton La Judas subcontracting with, uh, miles leak detection to complete that work.
Questions or comments on this? All right, Ray, how about RL 20-116, please?
This is a resolution that, uh, authorizes the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement with Barton La Judas for the final design permitting and bidding phases, um, of the Moeller Street Stormwater Pump Station project. This is to put a pump station near Moeller Street to help eliminate a lot of the localized flooding that occurs when the river is up and the storm drains cannot discharge out. This is something that the city really needs to have.
Questions or comments on this? All right, Ray, on the 20-117, please.
And this resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into a supplemental agreement, number one, with, uh, GHD as part of our, uh, lead services line replacement project that's a DOH grant. Um, it's, it's, uh, for $14,200 and it's to help us, uh, do paperwork at the end of the project so that we get everything that DOH requires submitted.
Questions or comments on this? Ray, when do you anticipate the, um, Moeller Street project being bid action? Do you have a date in mind?
Um, I believe next year.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Thank you, Ray.
Yes, sir.
Jared, on to you next.
Okay, um, just getting everything lined up here. So I have a group, group of RLs here that relates, it's to about $1.25 million in COVID relief, um, as, as of the CARES Act allocation for CDBG entitlement communities. This has been the, the monies that we've been talking about. Yeah.
We got feedback. Can anybody mute your mics, please, if you're not talking? I can hear you.
Is that better?
Appears to be better right now, yes. Jared, try it again.
Okay, let me know if it, if it gets, it's bad again. Um, so again, a five, $1.5 million in COVID-19 relief funding Monday, um, related to entitlement communities and, um, related to entitlement community entities, and I go line by line in terms of the RLs. Can you hear me?
You still got feedback there, Jared, but I can't make you out. Can anybody else hear, Jared?
No, I'm hearing not, it doesn't sound like feedback, but it's glitching a little bit. It sounds like a stutter.
All right, let me, let me try something else, just one moment. How about now? Is that a little bit different?
So far, yes.
Okay, change microphones here. Hopefully, that's, that's better. So, sorry about that. $1.5 million in grants, and I can go line by line. This is the final step, city council approval is the final step in order for us to activate this funding and make it available for, for agencies and otherwise to, to provide the COVID-related assistance. Ken Frank sent an email this afternoon that I think outlines very well kind of where all the money is going and what everyone will see on their resolutions on Wednesday. First RL, which is 20-110, is to create categories of COVID-19 relief funding for direct financial assistance programs. This is within the CDBG budget, which includes low and moderate income individuals. The income requirements are not as low as the Emergency Solution Grant, ESG, funding for things like rental assistance. So this breaks up four categories to be managed by the Office of Economic Recovery in direct rental assistance, mortgage assistance, business and nonprofit assistance. For the rental and mortgage assistance, that will be done on a case-by-case basis through the Office of Economic Recovery. For business and nonprofit assistance, any allocations to businesses or nonprofits impacted by COVID would have to still go through city council for a, an approval. It will be just like we do with other CDBG contracts, where I would envision that city council will get a list of agencies and the amount, and they will, they will have to approve those before any money goes out to a business or nonprofits. So that's the first RL for that direct business rental mortgage and nonprofit assistance from the CDBG allocation of monies.
Questions or comments on 20-110? Councilman Riley? Have a question?
Okay, sorry about that. It wouldn't let me unmute, but I'll wait till we're done with all of them, because it relates to CARES overall. So I'll wait.
Carry on, Jared.
Sure, the, the next RL, which is 20-111, this is in agreement with Fairview Recovery Services, where upgraded to coordinated entry and homeless management information system, or HMIS. We're splitting this cost with the Town of Union, which is the other entitlement community, and in Broom County. There is a needed upgrade to client tracking systems through the continuum of care coordinated entry, which means that homeless services are provided in a prioritized way. And so there's some local decisions based on national objectives as it relates to a coordinated entry. They need upgrades to their system for just, to handle the influx that'll happen as part of COVID. And, you know, this is ineligible use for the COVID-related monies, and it's critical, because any homeless individual seeking assistance will have to go through that coordinated entry system.
Questions or comments on this? All right, Jared, on to the next one, please.
The next two were based on recommendations from the Continuum of Care for allocations of Emergency Solution Grant funding, ESG. One is in agreement with Volunteers of America for a use of this funding for shelter sanitation, $16,000. The other is in agreement with the YWCA for a street outreach, $47,000 and change. This is their program to do housing of individuals experiencing homelessness in hotels and motels. There's really a kind of boiled-in issue with funding for homeless services that when Code Blue expires, which is a law that requires that any homeless individual is not left on the street, that emergency housing is, is found. Once the temperature gets up to a certain point that expires, there's a gap in services with the Department of Social Services of Broom County, and, and when there's no more Code Blue. So this would kind of fill that gap, and it was recommended, recommended by Continuum of Care. So those are the two RLs, 20-12 and 20-13.
All right, we'll, we'll leave both comments at the end of this, so.
Okay.
Here, carry on to 20-114, please.
And the last one is in agreement with the Family Enrichment Network for use of CARES-ass funding for homelessness prevention services. This is where the bulk of our ESG money for COVID-related expenses are going, as recommended by the Continuum of Care. And this is, you know, direct rent and utility assistance for the extreme low-income families in our neighborhoods to prevent eviction and homelessness. Family Enrichment Network handles a program very similar to this, so they're, they're kind of poised and ready to assist. This funding will obviously be very important over the next several months as the, the stays on eviction are lifted from, from New York State, and there's some other federal stays regarding housing, so this will be critical. And again, this can only be targeted toward extreme low-income families. They have to meet a certain housing requirement, excuse me, certain income requirements.
Questions or comments? Councilman Riley, please.
Yes, thank you, Jared, for going over these RLs. I would like to commend Steve and the CDAC and the Economic Development gentleman, his name is escaping me right now, for the work they have done. I do have a question, though, because we're a little bit behind the other cities and localities that have already posted their, their substantial amendment for community review, and subsequently have already released HUD funding. Is there a reason why we're now doing this?
I would say that we moved as quickly as possible. Our folks, you mentioned Steve. Paul Nelson is the other individual in our Office of Economic Recovery, who has decades of experience dealing with HUD. They were on the phone with, with HUD on a, on a daily basis to seek guidance on, you know, when, when funds would be released, et cetera. I know that the Town of Union, which is also in Broom County, we're working hand in glove with them. You know, whether different regions receive certain things at different times, I can't speak to that, but I know that this is, we moved as quickly as we could to, to get this to city council and approve.
Does this require an additional review by the town resident, the city residents, I'm sorry, or have we met that waiver requirement that HUD also lists as an option?
I'm not sure what waiver requirement you're speaking of, but we did have the CDAC process and the public hearing. So we meet all HUD requirements as it relates to public comment on this.
Not for the, the substantial amendment. That was for the first rollout, but the substantial amendment is, is what we're looking at now, which outlines, again, which budget we are amending to actually roll the funds out, correct?
Steve Carson, I don't think Steve is on the call, but.
Okay, that's okay. I'll ask him. I did email him, but I did not receive any responses. One more question. So the CDAC has already reviewed and approved this legislation as it is written?
No, the CDAC provided recommendations for use of the funding. At a, at a previous point, it was, it was shared with, with city council and the mayor's office. So based on that recommendation, this is the mayor's budget for use of CDBG and ESG funding as, as part of CARES.
Okay. Final, I did say one question, but sorry. There was a survey that was posted for community participation and review that I was told would inform, further inform, and give us data to support our budgetary spending and allocation. Do you have any summary data that we could look at? Or, or could you give us just some information about that survey?
Paul Nelson was running that survey through the Office of Economic Recovery and made recommendations to our office when we were putting together that budget. I, I don't have it, but I can ask Paul for it.
That would be great. We would, I, well, Angela, I'm not speaking on behalf of all the council people, but I think it would help us when we're speaking with our constituents about the recommendations that came from the community-based survey, since that supports our allocation of resources. So I think that will help us all. So thank you for letting me know to reach out to Paul Nelson. And, and that concludes, I think, my questions for now.
Other questions or comments on this? All right, Grace, on to you with the penny legislation, please.
I guess probably me.
Please, okay.
So all we have is the item we held over at the last business meeting, which is accepting a payment for the mayor to execute an agreement with New York State DOT for exhumation of additional property at Vestal Ave bypass. This is the 434 Greenway project.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Because I want to make sure everybody understands that by not approving this, what we're doing is just saying we're not accepting the $15,000, and we want to go to court to dispute the valuation. The DOT is going to take the property within the next 30 plus or minus days. They file a map and the property is taken.
Councilman Burns?
You're muted.
They're not going to just take it and not give us the $15,000, right?
Yes, they can.
But they, but they won't.
What they do is they take the property. If we don't, if we don't accept the $15,000, they take the property, and then we can dispute the value of the property after that.
Right, but we, we're not going to dispute it. Like, they're going to take the property of the people up there in Vestal Avenue that don't want them to take it, and they're going to just give them what they're saying is the fair market value. So.
That's not, that's not true. You always have a right to challenge the amount. But the taking happens unrelated to the amount of the property.
Yeah.
So within the next, I talked to them last week, they're going to take the property in the next 30 days, plus or minus. So if we don't take the $15,000 now, we're real, or we can take it now and still dispute the value, but we're going to spend, I don't know, $3,000, $5,000 on an appraiser, and we're going to go to court, and a year or a year and a half from now, a judge is going to award us $15,000.
That's only if you dispute what they're going to, they're going to take it from you, and they're going to say, this is how much we're going to give you. If you dispute it, then you got to spend that $3,000. But if you don't dispute it, then you don't dispute it. You just take the $15,000.
But you have to agree to take the $15,000. That's what, that's what they're asking in this resolution?
No, no, the people that they're stealing the property up on Vestal Avenue, they're just going to give them what the appraiser says the money is worth. The people aren't paying for the appraiser. They don't want anything to do with it. So we don't have to pay for the appraiser either. Just tell them, we're not giving it to them, and then they will take it from us, and they will then give us whatever the appraiser says is the fair market value.
That's not, they, they don't just, if you're, if you don't accept the value, DOT says we're going to tell you.
You're going to accept the value. Who appraised the $15,000?
I, I apologize. I'm not understanding your point.
Who, where did they get the number $15,000? Somebody had to come up with that.
The New York State DOT appraiser came up with that.
Exactly my point. So when we say no, then they're going to take it, and they're going to say, it's only worth $15,000, the same thing that they're going to do to the people on Vestal Avenue. So you're saying that it's going to go on and on and on, because we're, it won't. It, it, it'll be just as fast as what they're doing to the people on Vestal Avenue.
That's not true.
Okay, then.
That's not true.
Why is it going to be, why would it be faster for them and not us? Why is that?
Because when you agree to accept the payment, you will receive.
People on Vestal Avenue are not going to agree to accept anything. I'm telling you that right now. So why is it that you say that it's going to, we are going to hold things up longer than the people on Vestal Avenue who don't want to give up their property?
So what you're, what you're saying is that we're not going to dispute it, but we're not going to approve it either.
That's correct. Because I would, personally, I'm voting no, because I want to send a message to them that it's not okay with me or the people in my district that they're stealing people's property who don't want it gone. So by me saying yes, I'm saying, yeah, let's just keep going along with this. Anyway, that's, that's my feeling on it. So I'm voting no.
Everybody has a choice on Wednesday, Joe, to vote how they want.
That is correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm not sure how much we need to, we talked about this a lot. So everybody's going to vote on Wednesday and pass their vote.
I do want to thank Lee for this link, because it does give us a more, it gives us the ability to go through all of the documents and review them. I think it would be beneficial for our residents to see it as well. I don't know if we can add the link to the calendar. I don't know. But I think to see the plan and to hear it from DOT's perspective is very beneficial. Is there something we can do, Lee?
Yeah, we could post it under the website calendar for Wednesday's business meeting.
Okay, thank you.
It's just a link to the DOT's website where they have a number of documents.
And, and they go into describing, and they show the map that we inquired about a couple of sessions ago. So again, thank you for that.
Okay, is there any comments or any other questions before we adjourn?
Yes, Tom, you and I have been in conversations, fellow council members. I've been emailing the mayor about some questions and concerns from District 3 and other district community members about how the council is, is really going to move forward. I sent an email, and I CC'd Tom. Tom wrote back to me asking if I ever received an email. And since that time, there have been some press releases about not only Governor Cuomo's executive order, but how mayor is going to convene a council of citizens to discuss the police policy. And, but that's only one part of the email. So I don't know if I need to go into depth, what, what we, what would be best, Tom?
Councilman Riley, why don't you just read the four points to that out of your email, please?
Okay, give me a sec, because I closed the email. But I just wanted you guys to know, I'm sure you're probably hearing from your constituents as well, about everything that is happening in the world, particularly as we move forward. You know, Friday is Juneteenth, for those of you that are not aware what Juneteenth is about. Now, of course, I won't be able to put my finger on it. Thanks a lot, Tom. Okay.
Angela, I could probably help you remember the points.
Thank you, please.
Angela, your first point, your first question was establishing a town hall meeting with the chiefs, I believe the mayor, if you recall it. if you recall it.
Yes, okay, yes, I found it. So, again, I wrote this in, so, you guys remember in council when I said I wanted to have a meeting and I wanted, if they felt more comfortable to go into executive session. You guys remember that very well, right? I think that was, um, Monday after the protests, about two weeks ago. May, it may have been more than that. Does everyone remember? So, I don't have to go over that part. Yes? Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, so right after that, the mayor said, let's have a meeting. And I said, again, I don't think we need a one-on-one meeting because I want all of us to be able to share the, um, the, the information with our constituents because we've all heard the same thing. So, I wrote in my email, I think it would be great to have this amongst all council members so that we are hearing the message and we are responsible to our constituents to convey what we're doing as a leadership team, the legislative body in the state. So, I use, thank you to Councilman Burns. I used an example of a town hall held in Santa Clara. I gave him a link. I showed him what the mayor and the, um, the chiefs did in that city and I can forward that link to you guys. I also talked about reinstatement of the Human Rights Commission. I also talked about exercising the enthusiasm of our young people in our community and reinstituting something similar to the Youth Bureau that was held several years ago, something like a youth council. And I also, uh, looked at Ithaca and their current youth council. Um, and then I said, how about we have standing mayor council meetings, not Jared, uh, Mayor David and the council, and Jared can come as well, um, to discuss, to develop and discuss goals and long-range plans. Now, again, it doesn't have to be monthly, but it could be consistent enough where we feel as if the flow of information is consistent and it increases that transparency we talked about during our first session together. So, those were the points I highlighted in that email. I've not yet received a response. So, I wanted to bring it to council and, and get your take and if it needs to move to committee because, again, the youth council, the Human Rights Commission are both committee uh, level discussions, but I wanted to, well, Tom suggested I bring it here tonight for discussion and deciding the next best steps.
I just want to ask for some comments from other council people on what, uh, Councilwoman Riley has put forward.
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Riley, for spearheading this. I think this is not only an excellent idea, but imperative to increase transparency, which is something that is important to all of us. Um, and I do agree that there, there seems to sometimes be a breakdown in the flow of information where it does feel like council gets the information at the same time that the constituents do. And I understand there's some things that council is not involved in the decision-making process, but at the same time, I do feel like as elected officials, it does seem like we should be privy to some information that seems to get lost, um, that seems to fall through the cracks somehow. So, I think, uh, it, it would be an excellent idea to have some kind of standing meetings or some kind of standardized, at the very least, have some kind of standardized flow of information just to allow us to be the best educated that we can so that when constituents come to us, they can, you know, we, we are able to provide them with the, um, up-to-date information.
One more, Councilwoman Riley, um, your email also mentioned the Human Rights Commission.
Can I ask some questions about that? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, hi. Regarding that, um, I, I tried to do a little bit of research and, um, what is it that you're sort of, we are sort of envisioning when we're talking about a Human Rights Commission? What do we want, what is it that we want it to look like? Um, again, I did a little bit of research and my understanding is that there's something already that exists through the New York State and that would sort of be kind of a, like a duplication of services. I mean, I'm, I'm not 100% sure that that's accurate, so I wanted to have that conversation. But my understanding is that we do have a New York State Human Rights Division here that's, uh, as, um, um, the group, with a, a group of people who are really, um, professional and trained in these sort of matters. And, I mean, I happen, I mean, I have full faith in, in what they do and how they've been appointed um, and have come to be in this position. So, um,
Question one.
I guess that would be, that would be one of the things that, you know, this is something that I've been thinking about. Um, how would it, would it fill a void? Is this something that we're missing? I mean, when, you know, we come, when, in my field, when we talk about, uh, you know, um, making sure that we, uh, address gap in services, we talk equally about, uh, not, uh, no duplicational services because it's a waste of time and resources at times. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. Um, in addition to that, and maybe this isn't the time to talk about this, but again, thoughts that I'm having about this is if we were to move forward with something like that, I, I, um, I remember a while ago, I think some of our community members, that it was almost a slap in the face and it was frankly a bit offensive to have folks on that particular committee or commission or whatever you call it that were not, um, didn't come across as folks that were necessarily without bias. And they had, um, in many ways aligned with certain political positions and organizations. And as somebody who, I, I strive or work really hard to look at both sides of the aisle, I want to make sure that if we're going to move forward, if, and whatever that might look like, we want to make damn sure that that's not the case and we're not insulting our community by putting folks in these sort of commissions or, um, memberships or whatever you want to call it, they're really not out there to do them justice, but really out there to maybe, um, make themselves look good. Um, we want to make sure those folks would be on there, they are ethically at the highest standard. And, um, you know, so I think that this is just something that I've been thinking about and, uh,
Just let me clarify, you had two questions. Question one was about what would it look like? Question two.
Councilwoman Riley, hold on a second. Let's let other council.
I wanted to make.
Sorry.
No, I just wanted to.
Hold on, make sure the people, let, let's let the council people weigh in on what you proposed and that we, that we clearly can go back to. Does anybody else have a comment about what's been proposed from Councilwoman Riley? Councilwoman Burns?
Yeah.
Well, we won't be able to answer her questions. That's what I'm saying unless we remember.
Hang on a second. Oh, Councilwoman Burns, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, well, this has to do with, uh, with all that and to, and, and today's, uh, press release by the mayor regarding the governor's, um, uh, order that, in part of the order, I think we all know what the order is, we all watch the news. But part of it, he says that, uh, we need to, that we must, we must put in a transparent citizen complaint de, des, disposition procedure to handle those and other issues raised by the community. Uh, the plan must include community participation and be enacted into local law by April 1st, 2021. So, being enacted into local law, that means that we are going to vote on it. And the mayor, I.
We want to vote on what?
I'm hoping, yeah, 21, I'm hoping that he, that he just sort of missed it, uh, on this because it says that, that any plan will, at the end of his today's email that we got, any plan will be offered for public comment and be presented to city council for ratification. Why aren't we included? He's got included, my office is working, he's got the Binghamton Police Department, nonprofit and faith-based community groups, Office of the Broome County District Attorney's Office, the Broome County Public Defender's Office and other community members, but not us. Why aren't we in that group? Why are we at the end, after they've decided everything, then we're going to vote yes or no? Why aren't we, who represent, we are eight people that represent a lot of constituents in the city that are going to be affected by this? You know, there's nine people that are elected. He's one, we're seven. As my good friend from the First Ward pointed out a couple of months ago on, on another issue. So, I, I think that having a meeting with the mayor would be a very good thing and we, and, and it's, and, and, you know, maybe this, uh, thing that Angela's talking about, the human rights and, and people, you know, we can talk about all that. Where, where they, where they will coincide, what would be duplicated and, and everything else. But I really believe that we, we must be included in this process. Anyway, that's it for me. Thanks.
Other, other comments on what Councilwoman Riley has proposed?
I think that it's definitely, I agree with you, um, Councilman Burns, um, we should be included. We need to play a huge role in all this. Um, but I just want us to be very careful because there's a lot of responsibility that we have and, um, based on history regarding this particular commission, and I don't know how long he was around. I wasn't very, um, impressed as far as, um, um, the motives and the folks that were, uh, parts, taking part in this. So, we just, I, I agree with you, you know, we need to be involved and we need to make sure that we do the right thing for our community. So, thank you.
We call this group that he's putting together to make this, and the order is to make a law. So, this commission that he's putting together to make the law, we should be on that commission, all seven of us, not just one and one. We should all be on it.
Councilman, Councilwoman Stroh, Councilwoman Skorinji, you got comments?
I'm just collecting some thoughts. I know Councilwoman Riley had some things she wanted to follow up with if she'd like to. She's more than welcome to.
Thank you, Councilwoman Skorinji. Um, so, um, President Scanlon, uh, Councilwoman Resonity did raise questions, which is why I did want to clarify. Uh, the letter I wrote to the mayor was based upon conversations from my constituents, June 3rd. We are now at June 15th and things have changed as Councilman Burns and as I alluded to with the executive order from the government, governor. So, yes, the HRC could not function as it once did and as it is defined and still listed on the website. So, that information is there, Councilwoman. And if you remember, the appointment is by the mayor. So, that too may need to be looked at as we come to the table. It's not partisan, it's about community. And so, I did not only talk about HRC, I also talked about empowering our youth, which is very important to both you and I as mothers and other parents here on the table, around the table too. But again, we know that we have voices in the community that want to do more and we need to utilize that enthusiasm in some form or fashion, be it the commission that is listed as it is listed or, or how we revise it, which can be done in committee. But there were a number of things on that list that I think we need to discuss. And again, it doesn't have to happen right now in the business session if it needs to move to committee, but I think we all are seeing the same thing. We want what's best for our city. We want to utilize the voices of the resident to not only evoke change, but empower leaders. And we want to be a part of what's happening, especially as we proceed to enact what was written in the email, the press release today that was, um, pushed for by the executive order. So, those were your two questions though, right, uh, Councilwoman?
Um, questions, comments, whatever they were. Yeah, yeah, I mean, to me.
Me, so I wanted to make sure I got them.
No, no, you did, absolutely. And I, I think, uh, the biggest piece for me was based, again, on what we've had in the past, I felt was completely frankly dysfunctional and totally biased and unhelpful in the community. So, if we're going to talk about getting together and making it different and better and, and fair, that's what it's about. It's just that I know the history of that particular commission has not been very, uh, hasn't been very positive. I mean, in my opinion, in the community of the community, or the, the folks in the community that I've talked to. So, but yeah, everything you said coming together.
And has been across the board.
Say that again.
That sentiment about how that's committee function.
I'm sure.
Then, you know.
I'm sure.
And the fact that it's still listed on our website, but empty. It, it's, so.
Again, when it's filled, and I'm not saying it shouldn't fill, we just need to make sure that it represents our community.
I have a. Can I say something more?
Sure, Councilwoman Burns.
Yeah. This would be down the road within the discussions, but I just want to go on record that, whether it be the commission or whether it be this, uh, citizen complaint system that the governor was talking about, is that there, we have to make sure that there is a way where, uh, our policemen are protected. Because if somebody can just come forward and make a complaint, we're so divided in this world now that half of the people are going to believe the complaint and half of them aren't, no matter what happens. So, there are people in this world that don't tell the truth, you know? So, I just want to make sure that the complainers are sort of, you just can't, somebody just can't go make a complaint and then we make it public and then we decide whether or not this, we're going to exonerate the person who's being complained about. I, I, I don't want to, I would never be for something that's going to be some kind of a, you know, a witch hunt or a trial, as, as the president calls them, witch hunts, you know? Uh, anyway, I'm just throwing that out there that it's got to be, it's got to be done really correctly. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
No, I appreciate that. If I can say one more thing, you know, lack of due justice, due process seems to be a huge problem and, and no matter what, we ought to have that.
The complaints themselves have to be.
I got it.
Other questions or comments before you, Jordan? Councilman, uh, Skorinji, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, am I echoing or is my voice okay?
You're good, you're fine.
That's, thank you. Sorry if I had some tech issues before, earlier. Um, so before I start this, I just want to make sure that I have these points correctly, um, in, in no particular order. So, there was discussion about the youth bureau, the HRC, town hall meetings and meetings between the council and the mayor. It, does that cover all of them? I just wanted to make sure I hit them all. Okay, um.
And the governor's executive order, sorry.
Uh, uh, thank you, Councilman. I appreciate, I, yeah, I had that in a sub note. Thank you for that. So, uh, meetings between the council and, and the mayor, uh, to my knowledge, I don't believe that the mayor has any issue with, and I don't think anyone on council has any issue with. Um, the, the only concern that I would have with that is just that, keep in mind that executive session, uh, legally through open meetings laws, uh, can only be used for very specific reasons and I do not believe that's one of them. Um, so, I'm sorry, I can't.
That was not in this follow-up email. You're, you're referring to something I said previously in the meeting. So, in that email, that was executive session. That was, this, my request, the four bullets were not executive. Were not requested.
Okay, um, the reinstatement of the Human Rights Commission, I, I will be very frank, uh, so in the last council, I believe it was February 2016, uh, the legislation, I did some homework on this today. Uh, it was, um, 16-01, I believe it was the second meeting. Uh, we actually had a very big discussion at that particular time as it relates to the Human Rights Commission about its impact on policy. Uh, there was an overwhelming bipartisan majority of a six to one vote, um, to push back against that. Uh, the reality of it is, is that at, at any local level, the way the Human Rights Commission is laid out, um, they are 100% appointments with no specialization uh, in what it is that they are commissioned to do. Uh, in addition to that, it's also a huge duplication because literally in the building right next door in the parking lot, we actually have a New York State Human Rights Commission who actually appoints people with. who actually appoints people with training and specializations in those potential areas and actually do have the ability to, whether it be award funds, impact particular cases and have a level of regulatory power, which obviously is not the same thing as law, but it can have the force as law. So that was actually one of my issues with it back at that particular time as well. As it relates to town hall meetings, I think town hall meetings are a great idea. I do quite a number of them myself, and I know a number of others also do them. We may have COVID issues right now as to how many people can particularly attend a meeting right now. But obviously, if you want to hold one in your district, you know, as long as that social distancing stuff is held, I think you're good there. And as it relates to the town hall meetings, I think Councilman Burns had actually mentioned regarding the governor's executive order. So thank you for mentioning that order as well. I think it's Executive Order 203. I did read the mayor's press release as well today. I'm fairly certain that the different constituency groups, Councilmember Burns, that were in that executive order were a pretty decent reflection of what was actually in the governor's executive order. Me personally, I did not take that as a, you know, as a non-invitation for council. And I do agree with you that I think council should be a part of that. You know, and obviously, if individual members have interests, you can shoot an email over to the email address that was in there and lay that out. And I believe for right now, that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Skorinji. Other comments before Jordan? Councilwoman Riley?
This is Council, yes, thank you again, President Scanlon. I just want to ask you guys. You both said that you did, took some time to do research based upon this topic. However, it wasn't on the agenda. Did you receive some type of information that this would be discussed?
I may have told them.
I didn't receive Okay. I didn't receive said email, and you told me that it was not on the agenda. So I was just wondering how how they were, how we knew this was coming, because we, you and I
I'm sure I've talked to, because I talked to all council people, Councilwoman Riley, so I'm sure I talked to
Okay, I just wanted to know.
Was I not supposed to?
No, it's not a secret. But again, when I, when you and I talked, you said, I think we don't need to put on the agenda. And I said, okay, I agree. So I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page. That's all.
No, I did, so obviously, I talked to everybody about it, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, yeah, me. In regards to what Councilwoman Riley was talking about, the meetings, the town meeting, the town hall meetings, I think she was talking about having an online one with the police, right? Wasn't it Angela? Wasn't just having, you know, it was
We're not talking about during COVID. As you see, I have a town hall coming up online. So we know how to implement those strategies. We're doing an online meeting now. But this was more for the public facing, not an individual's district, but for the chiefs and the mayor. That was it, where the public had questions. Again, since you all didn't see that email, I can forward it. So you know what was said specifically opposed to second-hand. But again, that happened June 3rd, and a lot has happened since then. So a lot needed to be updated, but I did want to make sure you were aware and that we were able to move forward. So I don't know what we've decided to do.
Say that again, you don't know what we decided to do, Councilwoman Riley?
Yes, I brought it here, and what are the next steps?
Councilwoman Riley, I would encourage you to call and have a one-on-one with the mayor. I mean, I would encourage you to, if he didn't answer your email, then you certainly can sit down with him, ask him. He's never denied a request for a meeting from any council person, as far as I know.
Correct. And as I've said over and over again, I don't need a one-on-one. I was doing this so that we can all be abreast of the answers. I said that. I think we can look at the record. I think I've said that every meeting. But you, we talked about bringing it here for a purpose, Tom, and you said perhaps it would go to committee, right?
I don't know if it needs to go to committee.
Okay, all right.
Well, because in a committee, you're asking questions that the mayor should answer directly. I mean, we don't have, we don't have a, we could talk about this all day, but there are decisions you're asking the mayor. The mayor would have to make those decisions. So we certainly, I'm not opposed to talking about it, believe me. But I think, I think if you said that with the mayor, you could get those answers, I think, you're looking for. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add something quickly that I think, I'm looking at the website right now, the Human Rights Commission page, and it says that the seven members are appointed by the mayor and city council. So I think that we can all, you know, I think that previous, you know, perceived biases could be avoided because we have control, at least partially, of who, like, if we were to reinstate the Binghamton Human Rights Commission, which for the record, I think would be an excellent thing to do, we have control over who we put on. So we can have, you know, if one person feels like the, you know, one point of view is not represented or one demographic is not represented, we do have control over that. So I just would be, I would be worried if we used past perceived biases to 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 justify not reinstating the Human Rights Commission. That's my opinion.
Can I say something, Mr. President? It's not being said or brought up to everybody's attention to justify not having this commission. It's just being brought up as something that we need to really be thinking about because I've heard comments about that. That's all that is, you know? If we're going to move forward, which I'm not sure that, how I feel about it, because I feel like it is a duplication of the service. But if we're going to move forward with it, I think we do need to take into consideration what we have learned from the past. I mean, that's what we're supposed to be doing. And what we've learned is that there were some folks in there that absolutely did not represent our community and frankly, behave in certain unethical behavior. So I just feel like we need to be having this conversation. It isn't about, you know, we should use it to not have it or to have it. But if we're gonna have it, I need to make sure that this information is out there and we do the best that we need to do to serve our community. And that's all I'm trying to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can I, yeah, can I just quickly respond?
Sure.
Thank you. So, okay, I maybe misinterpreted what you said. I didn't want biases of the previous commission to be a reason to not reinstate the commission. I think it's absolutely important to vet all of the people who are on the commission. I just don't, you know, I don't want our past, I don't want to say our past mistakes because we, none of us were on the council, but the, maybe the past mistakes to negatively affect the future of the commission in that way.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments before Jordan? Yes.
I just have one quick reminder for everybody. Just remember that you're all sponsors on all the legislation tonight until I hear otherwise. So if you want to remove your name from an RL, just shoot me a quick email, okay? Thank you.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.